I'd like to call to order this meeting of August 2nd, special meeting. Laura, could you please call the roll? Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt, here. Miznick.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Miznick.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Kathy Moran.
Here, thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Laura, should I wait till we get rid of the echo?
Yeah.
Testing, testing. I think we're good. All right. We have one agenda item tonight, and it is our Facility Critical Needs Report. And we have two guests. We have Kim Crawford and Rob Price. And so I'm going to turn over to the two of you to take us through the presentation and questions. Thanks.
Perfect. Good evening, President Gebhardt, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. It is tonight. I sit here with a great deal of pride, thinking back to how long this process is taking. We have had numerous community meetings, several working groups. When you think of the New Vista Working Group, our Capital Improvement Plan Review Committee, and the hundreds, if not thousands, of hours that went into the facility assessment, staff time putting together our facilities critical needs list together. So, thank you, but extremely proud of the outcome of what sits in front of you tonight. So just as a reminder, in June, the board approved us to move forward with a $350 million package to address our most critical needs. And this was again based on the feedback from our facility assessment that was done by our third-party, Gordian, the New Vista Working Group, the Capital Improvement Plan Review Committee, meetings with business leaders, school leaders, district enrollment data based on what we're seeing in Erie, and also the community polling results. So, when working with Gordian, our third-party vendor, we completed the district-wide assessment. They assessed all $4.8 million, or all $4.8 million square feet of our facilities and about 800 acres of our sites. And that assessment came back with and identified $670 million of needs that come due in the next 10 years. Our buildings continue to age, and our major systems continue to reach their end of life. So the assessment prioritized those requirements by urgency related to their due date. And we've showed that to the board before, where we had priorities one and two. They needed to be completed in years one and two, and then three through five and six through 10. So the 2022 Facilities Critical Needs Plan before you tonight represents the $350 million of our highest priorities. More than half of that will go to critical major maintenance such as roofing, building systems, code-compliant items, some of our site infrastructure when we're thinking about parking lots, site lighting, synthetic turf fields, tracks, some of those that we have to upkeep. All of this is required to keep our schools safe, operational, code-compliant, and in good condition. And it's critical that we stay on top of these items to avoid impacting the spaces that we teach and learn in. So the plan itself provides an overview of what's included, how the list was developed, including the building-by-building assessment, how the community has been involved in the process, a school-by-school list of work to be completed, and an explanation of what happens if we don't complete this work, which is extremely important. Just opening it up, I'm going to guide you to page three, the executive summary, which provides a high-level overview of why we need to continue to invest in our learning environments and what's included in this plan. Again, we are privileged to have a community that values public education. Our voters have repeatedly trusted us to make fiscally responsible decisions with public funds, and we continue to deliver on their promise to be good stewards of their money. As we all know, the state of Colorado doesn't provide funding to educate, provide enough funding to educate students and maintain our buildings. So therefore, we continue to turn to our taxpayers to ask for help. The Critical Needs List on page five provides a glance of what's included. So, and I'll start, there's three major categories. The first major category is aging buildings. This category includes significant investment to maintain and update our facilities to ensure they are safe and functional and can continue to serve students. Just as a reminder, more than half, 36 of our 61 facilities are 40 years old. If you think about it, our oldest building was Whittier Elementary School, built in 1882, 140 years old. I've never been part of a project where they said, "We're going to build a building that lasts 140 years." We're continuing to talk about new schools lasting 50 to 70 years. So think about that. The learning environments at Whittier Elementary haven't changed. I mean, in Whittier Elementary, we have Mapleton, constructed in 1889, Gold Hill, 1910, Uni Hill, 1915. Just think about that. I think that shows a lot of the way we've maintained our buildings. Those buildings have lasted. But it also tells you that we have systems that are failing, and we have to continue to invest in those buildings if we're going to continue to utilize them for schools. So again, easy to understand how half the funding is directed towards major capital improvements that replace and update those worn-out materials and equipment. We must continue to invest in our schools if we want to use them the way they're being used today. Also under this category, and as we're thinking about aging buildings, a community working group determined that New Vista High School, which was constructed in 1952, should be replaced based on the significant issues that the building has today. So again, the facility assessment and an evaluation by a third-party architect told us that the cost to renovate and address the identified deficiencies exceeded 75% of the cost to construct a new building. Again, the working group made a recommendation of the Board of Education to replace New Vista on its current site. So the cost to replace New Vista is included in the Critical Needs List. Now is the time to plan for students that we know are coming. So the plan also includes a new school in Erie, a PK-5 school, to accommodate the enrollment that we are seeing, both around Metal Arc and also from the Parkdale Development that will have about 1,400 single-family homes. We expect those homes to be constructed in the next five to 10 years. Those homes will generate approximately 800 students. Metal Arc, which is our first school in Erie, is already at capacity of PK-5. We'll be putting portables there this summer. That is not the expectation that we've had for the school district. So it is clear that permanent capacity is needed for the projected enrollment growth that we are seeing in Erie. The third bullet, expanding educational opportunities and postgraduate readiness, is the critical need to make an investment in career and technical education at all of our secondary schools, middle level and high schools. So this work environment evolved, but our classrooms and our offerings have not. So we are proposing to create industry-inspired environments at our secondary schools and at Boulder Tech with the latest equipment, helping our students develop skills along with hands-on experience that leads to high wage and high-growth jobs. So these renovations will allow us to build intentional pathways in areas such as cybersecurity, engineering, healthcare, culinary arts, and more. Continuing to move on, community involvement has been critical to the development of this plan. The past spring, a 23-member Capital Improvement Plan Review Committee, composed of teachers, parents, and community members, met with staff to review our identified needs and provide their perspectives and feedback. The feedback from the community was valuable in helping refine the Critical Needs List and inform facilities planning in the future. So what if we don't do the work now? Delaying this critical work to our buildings as they continue to age will allow conditions to deteriorate and costs escalate. So the risk gets higher, the costs continue to increase. And when we think about it, we continue to compete against other school districts for general contractors, subcontractors, suppliers, et cetera. What we are seeing this year is there's two, maybe three, other school districts that will be going for bond measures. And I look at that, that's two or three in the Denver metro and along the Front Range, and that is in our favor. There's been years where we're competing five, six, seven school districts, and we're utilizing the same subcontractors and general contractors, which only increases the price. So when I talk about costs will increase, not only will they increase because of inflation, they will increase because of competition. So my words to you is take advantage of the environment that we have in November to move forward with this, because again, the costs will only continue to climb as we're moving Pages 16 and 17, let me, before I move on there, I want to hit on one important note. So again, Gordian, when they came in, they did an assessment of all 4.8 million square feet. They identified $670 million of needs, right? That's only years one and two. And potentially, this is a four-to-five-year bond program. So if we don't do the work now, all we're doing is compounding those needs over time. At some point, they have to happen. So if you don't do years one and two, we push that out, costs continue to increase, we're continuing to take on the maintenance of our facilities, facilities improvements, et cetera. So again, I would just encourage you, as you're thinking about this, the costs continue to increase, the risk continues to increase, the impacts of the learning environments continue to increase by not taking care of these critical needs. Pages 16 through 17, I'll point those out. These are school breakdowns. They're broken out into different categories, including the building envelope, building systems, infrastructure site, safety and code, and then interior space improvement. On the secondary schools, you'll see a category for career and technical education. So on middle schools, for example, middle school would be eligible up to $455,000 in addition to the funds labeled on their sheet to invest in renovations, to create learning environments, to support career and technical education. If you look at a high school, a high school is eligible to receive up to $2.86 million for career and technical education. Boulder Tech, we are making a significant investment in. Boulder Tech is eligible for $21.45 million to make investments for career and technical Finally, you will flip to page 71. Provides an overview of our work to be completed, our district-wide locations. You'll see some work in this building itself to replace rooftop units that did not get replaced in the 2014 bond, and then some minor improvements at the Lafayette Bus Terminal to construct some ADA-compliant restrooms and address some other ADA needs that we have out there. I think it's extremely important to say, we addressed our needs in the 2014 bond from a district-wide assessment. Again, we constructed our education center, our transportation facility, our central kitchen, among a number of other things. So again, showing our taxpayers those investments matter, and we don't have to invest in them now. You'll also see the same thing on the five new schools that we constructed, small dollars on Creekside, Douglas, Emerald, and Metal Arc, and also Halcyon. Some small control upgrades we need to make there, and then we've noticed that we need some additional shade structures, et cetera, at a few of the schools. But again, we're not investing in those, because those are new buildings, don't require a lot of maintenance at this time. Page 72 summarizes the facility assessment needs, our programmatic needs, and our site assessment needs. So this is a list of how we've got to the $350 million. And then page 73 is a distribution of how those dollars would be spent from the full $350 million. That does exclude, I shouldn't say from the full $350, that does exclude inflation and program reserve. The reason for that is we don't give projects, each individual project, inflation and program reserve until it's identified what they actually need. I want to continue to add on, as we push forward with this, and if we are fortunate enough to move forward with the bond, we'll continue to push our sustainability goals as they're outlined in our Sustainability Action Plan. Some of the stuff that you'll see includes upgrading the newer, more efficient equipment, just like we've done in the past, replacing fluorescent fixtures with LED fixtures, utilizing low-flow fixtures, utilizing low VOC materials, continuing to recycle, repurpose, reuse as we're moving forward. With that, the other item that you have in front of you tonight is the ballot question. You will see a few blanks that are, still have not been filled in. We will have that information to you by the August 9th meeting. But right now, you will see a total increase of $350 million. We have included four bullet points that are descriptive enough to give voters an understanding of the work to be completed. However, they don't include everything. But we do reference the Critical Needs List. That does include everything that would be in the $350 million. So those two documents are before you tonight, and with that, I would open it up for questions.
Beth?
First of all, thank you, as always. I really appreciate the presentation and all of today's information. Couple of questions, sort of a minor question for clarification, understanding purposes. Under safety and code, on several of the different school line items, you listed it as life safety improvements. I'm just wondering what that means.
So life safety improvements would be upgrading fire alarm systems, upgrading intercom systems, any type of system, fire suppression systems, et cetera. So it might be an upgrade, it might be a replacement, et cetera. Kathy had some comments earlier. I'll look at that, and if we can be more descriptive, I'll be more descriptive on those items.
No problem, thanks. And just another one. Certainly, I agree that CTE is a critical investment, and I love that I see reflected in your secondary levels. But just kind of as a curiosity, what, how many of the elementary schools looks like start blocking potential CTE funding? I just wondered if you could speak to that a little bit.
Elementary schools are not being infused with CTE funding, but I think the, not at elementary level. The idea is to have some intentional pathways built in. I don't, do you want to talk through that? But right now, there's no funding going to elementaries. Now, at K8s, they would receive funding just due to the middle level.
And I will say, in the 2014 bond, those innovation dollars could potentially have built spaces in our schools to meet those needs. If they built STEM labs, they built maker spaces, so on and so forth. But the real programming starts to really become embedded from sixth through 12th grade.
Any, Richard, do you have questions?
It's been a long summer. Just a quick follow-up on Beth's question around CTE, especially at the middle school level. Can you kind of give us a picture in terms of what kind of CTE activities would be occurring, both at the middle school and high school?
Before Rob takes that, as a reminder, as we think about programming, you know, what Rob is presenting is the changing of the facilities to enable the programming. And as we think about defining and identifying those pathways, I think what Rob will talk to you about is this idea of design advisory teams, working within each individual community, coordinating middle through high school within those communities to make sure that we have pathways that our communities feel are important, aligned to the workforce needs that we have within our community. And so we haven't necessarily predetermined what programs are going where. I don't feel like that would be responsible before engaging our community in those types of conversations. And so, Rob, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, and I think once those programs are defined through a working group that Dr. Messier and Artley Helfman will be leading, it'll be more of that backwards planning. What are we trying to accomplish, and what type of spaces are we creating? And then, as Rob said, through a design advisory team, which is made up of parents, teachers, administrators from the school level, and an architect, we'll start thinking about what spaces we want to create at each individual high school and at Boulder Tech. So it's more intentional, but we, a true understanding of what we're going to be accomplishing. We also want to create spaces that are flexible. I mean, if this is something that can be used in five, 10, 15 years from now, we have to be able to create flexible spaces, and that's what we don't have at our schools today. If you think about it, it's more of that sales-and-bells model, where we have four walls and a door. We've got to be able to create something that we're capturing, incorporating what could change. If it's cybersecurity today, what will it be tomorrow?
Thanks, Rob. I'm just asking a question, because I recall that we've spent a lot of time on that. Okay. That's working. Going back in terms of building trades, I know that we've had a lot of discussion around building trades at the high schools, and I know that Brewfield, for example, has an excellent program around building trades. And I'm just wondering if we're going to be able to provide those opportunities at the high schools. And I recall, as I was going to school, we used to have bootshod. Now, I'm not sure whether that's going to be part of it or not. It'll be interesting to find out soon, once the community's ready to get there, and they decide what they're going to be doing.
I can't speak for every high school, Richard. I do, like you said, I do know that Brewfield has it. As a reminder, we are still moving forward with the modular home factory out back, which will be, I can't think of a better example of getting experience in construction trades, right? Where you're building a home from really the floor up, and then they're going to ship it off, so you're going to get electrical and mechanical and framing experience. You're going to be able to put drywall on the walls and figure out how to tape it. So, you know, all of that experience that's going to be right back here, that's one, and I'm extremely excited about that, and we'll be bringing that to the board in the upcoming months on where we're at with that process. But again, I'd have to look to Dr. Messier or Artley on where we're at, expanding that into all high schools.
And just another quick question here. As I was reading the plan, which is an excellent plan, by the way, it's pretty comprehensive, I was intrigued with that one paragraph that talks about Grad Plus and expanding bilingual opportunities, et cetera. However, I didn't see any, anything as it related to bilingual opportunities in terms of facility bilingual, if we're going to need any, any kind of facility expansion for bilingual opportunities or not. So my question is, do we have the capacity right now to be able to do that within what we have? Or do, are we going to be able to, are we going to need more facility increases or whatever capacities for bilingual opportunities?
Referring to a dual-language program at secondary level? Is that...
Right.
Yeah. I think that's something that we'll continue to have discussions around. Right now, you know, looking for some, you have something to add to that?
So we don't have that as a facility need today. We are, as we've shared with the board, going through a year-long process to really decide and determine where things will be as we think about expanding those opportunities. Do we have capacity? I believe we do have capacity to be able to expand that. Now, to the extent that you would need additional facility cost needs, upgrades, you know, once we identify those, and I think that then that's when we would approach that, but that is not necessar, that's not included in what Rob is presenting today.
Just one last comment, and maybe a question involved in it. As I was reading the plan, I was trying to anticipate some of the concerns that our community may have as it relates to the plan. And my question is, are we going to have some time at some of the point to discuss some of these potential criticisms or concerns as it relates to community concerns?
As we're hearing them, yes, we'll address them as they come up, you know? I want to discuss a little bit about, you know, the thing that continues to come up is our long-range advisory committee that will be looking at enrollment district-wide. This plan focuses on the need for a school in Erie, you know, but we know we have declining enrollment in Boulder, for example. Over the next month, we're going to be starting our long-range advisory committee. It'll start meeting in September. That committee will meet all the way through April. If we're successful in November with this ballot measure, we'll start with the secondary schools. Our enrollment issues are really at the elementary level. So we'll start at the secondary schools, which will give us plenty of time to be making decisions. If there's a decision that occurs, we'll be able to go back to our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee that will oversee this package and get guidance from them, and then bring it to the board for approval. So we won't make unnecessary investments when the time comes, but I do want to assure the board that we will start at the secondary level, which will buy us plenty of time before we get into the elementary schools.
Thank you, Rob.
Kitty, do you have any questions? Stacy, Lisa?
Just, I think, a little thing. So for Erie, we were talking about a K5, not a K8? Or does it matter with the, definitely a K5? And then, do you remember, I know we've gotten lots of stats from Jonathan, but do we know off the top of our heads how many people we are already over in the elementary schools there, and how many more we're anticipating in the new builds?
Yeah, we're anticipating, I don't know if I have it in here tonight, but I want to say in the next year to two years, we'll be 20% over capacity at PK through five at Metal Arc. And then three years out, we're almost 50% over capacity.
And are we taking some of the burden off Ryan with this new build as well, or is it only Metal Arc?
Only Metal Arc.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, yep. I do want to talk, why not a K8? That question continues to come up a lot. Right now, we have capacity at both Angivine and Centaurus to handle the Parkdale Development and some of the growth that we're seeing at Metal Arc. So we do feel comfortable, based on the projections that we have today, we feel comfortable that we do have that capacity at both those schools.
Circle back, Beth? Okay, I'm sure this is no surprise, I have a bunch of questions. So, Kim, can you walk the board and people who are listening through why we have to put in the ballot measure, the 6% of actual, and where we are now, and kind of what that looks like? Because I don't want people to think we're trying to pull a fast one on them, that it's allowed by statute, and why are we doing that, and just kind of an overview of that so that we have a better understanding of that.
We also have Bill Sutter online, who'd be happy to weigh in as well, Kim, if you need a hand.
Sure, thank you. So you all are familiar with the Taxpayers' Bill of Rights, and so, under the Taxpayers' Bill of Rights, you have to vote a weakening of limits. So when you are increasing your debt limit from 20% to 6% of statutory actual, you have a bigger debt limit. It goes from like $1.6 billion, which is a lot of money, at 20% of your current assessed value. And I didn't do the math at the 6%, but you're well within that right now, and even if you issued $350 million, you would still be within that 20%. But many districts have gone ahead and voted this. Most of them are a lot closer than you're going to be. But you do have to vote it under state law and under Tabor, because you're weakening the Tabor limits.
Bill, do you have the number of what 6% of actual is off the top of your head, or ballpark?
Um...
Kim said she could do the math, she has her phone out. But this is something that...
I want to...
Go ahead.
It's like $4 billion, I think, give or take.
Okay. So this is...
So I have, I have several thoughts on this, if you would like...
Fire, fire away. We would love your thoughts, Bill.
Okay. So the 20% of assessed value, of course, that is actually based on actual value, right? So you derive actual value through the process that that is in statute, and then you apply the assessment rates to get, for residential and non-residential property, to get the assessed value. Unfortunately, there are many organizations and special interest groups, and even the legislature for that fact, that have the ability to mess with the assessment rates. Actual value will always be what actual value is. There is no, other than, again, the legislature could change statutorily what actual value is, but that would be a little strange to go through that. But by messing with the assessment rates, you mess with what that assessed value is. So by making this shift to the 6% of actual... So by making this shift to the 6% of actual value, it sets this number that we can report on, we can describe, we can not make excuses for as to why it changes or doesn't change based on some ballot measure that some group gets on the ballot. And certainly, it doesn't change the requirement that the voters actually approve increasing debt. So at the point in time down the road, however many years in the future that might be, either a few months if this one were to be voted on, or multiple years, the voters still get to approve whatever the increase in debt is and have the ability to say no, regardless of what that debt limit is. It's just that 6% of actual, in my opinion, is a bit more real because it's not changed by those assessment rates, again, that can be changed for a host of reasons. So like, it's kind of just setting it in stone before there's a requirement. I believe, Kim might be able to answer this specifically, but most of the other districts, if not all, had to go ask, or they were very close to their debt limit at the time that they made the ask. So this is sort of preemptively making that decision to say, here's what it is. The board can entertain a policy of what it would like to do if it wanted to set an internal limit based on policy. And of course, the board always has the option to, the board has to move forward any debt that is asked for. So it doesn't change any of those processes. It just puts in place this limit that's kind of, I would argue, a little bit more based in reality, rather than this assessed value thing that is recently been the target of multiple changes at the ballot or at the legislative level.
In fact...
That's my two cents.
In fact, the legislature's played with the last two sessions, assessed value rates, correct?
Yep.
And I think when people think about their homes, they think about actual value. Nobody talks about my house is worth the assessed value of XYZ. So I just think it's talking in language, like you said, Bill, that people are used to talking in when they talk about what their home values are worth.
Yes.
So we don't know yet, Kim, what this would be per, I don't know how, are we going to break it up, per Boulder housing prices are so crazy, so is it per million-dollar home? Or how are we going to talk about, because that's what people are going to want to know is, how much is this going to cost me? And then what does it do to, and I'm guessing we don't have those numbers yet, what's it going to do to commercial? Because that's always a heavier lift because of the way that the tax code is written. So when will we have those numbers?
So we did the calculation on the home value, and it's, the calculation is based on actual value of a residential home. We used 600,000 as the benchmark. You can sort of pick any number. To say a per 100,000 makes it a little weird because there aren't any $100,000 homes in Boulder Valley, but an half a million, 500,000 is a little shy of what the true kind of average is across the whole district, although the math is a little easier at 500. But we went with 600,000, and it's about $9 a month.
And then, can we do that for businesses, or how do we do that for commercial?
Yeah, we can do that. We just haven't done it yet. So we'll have that included in the information for next week.
All right, thanks, Bill. Anything else to add on that? No? Okay.
No.
So can you talk a little, because I think the board has been receiving, is the nicest way you can put it, emails from a certain charter community? Can you talk about the process for what we're required to do for including the charters? How every charter's been included in this? And the needs that we are assessing for charters are the same as we're assessing for all the other schools? Could you walk us through that process?
Yeah, happy to. Colorado statute requires us to give notice to all of our charter schools that we're thinking about participating in a bond election. So we did that. We followed that. We gave proper notification. We also included all of our charters in our facility assessment. So just as a reminder, a third party went out, assessed all of our charter schools. The same across every school in the district, plus all of our support facilities. So they were assessed, didn't matter what charter it was, they were assessed exactly the same as every school in the district. What we've done is those priorities, priorities one and two were included in each. We have reached out to charters, asked what their needs were. If they're needs aligned with the needs that are highlighted in this document, for example, if they had CTE needs, or if they had facility needs that fell in priorities one and two, then we included them in this document. So they have been part of this in the same way that every school in this district has been included in this critical needs list.
And I don't know if this is for you or for Bill, but can you talk about how the way we look at facility needs isn't, we don't do it on a per pupil basis. We look at the overall quality of the facility, we look at the needs, but it doesn't really work to break it out on a per pupil basis. Can you explain a little bit more about that?
We don't look at it on a per pupil basis, nor do we look at it a square foot basis. We look at it by going out and doing an assessment. So, and again, the assessments are, you know, we take experts, they look at every system, from a roof system to the building envelope, to mechanical, electrical systems. They do that for every single school. They're the experts. We rely on them. But no, a per pupil basis, we don't build schools on a per pupil basis, you know, other than trying to establish square footage, nor do we give schools funding based on square footage because their needs might be different. You know, one school, as I talked about, Whittier, built in 1882, is quite different than a school that was built in 1989. And I think everyone would understand that, therefore, that's why we don't give funding based on one of those two options, truly based on a facility assessment.
As you know, Rob, when I was going through this, I was wondering if we could explain the HVAC upgrades, because during COVID and during the last bond, I think rightly, we were a shining star for how we handled HVAC during COVID, and we've put a lot of money into HVAC. So I think when our public looks at this, they're going to think, didn't we already do that? And why are we having to do more? And what is it? And it's not, I know you can't spell it out specifically by school, but I think if we could have some language explaining that, because otherwise it looks like either we didn't, we weren't honest before, or things didn't last more than two years. And you understand all that, and your facilities people do, but I'm not sure the public will.
And yeah, I will address that. I do want to explain a little bit of how this works. When we go out and assess rooftop units, for example, we do not replace rooftop units until they're at their end of life. So if one rooftop unit was installed in 2002, and let's say it lasts 20 years, and another one was installed in 2010, well, we're only replacing the one in 2002 because it's at the end of life. We're not going to replace the other one. So when we say we replace mechanical systems, a lot of times, the majority of the system is replaced, but maybe not all of the components associated with that. We might have a boiler that didn't get replaced, or circulation pumps. There's a lot of different components that are required to make these systems functional. So we might replace 75% of them, but not 100%. We might, on some buildings, get 30% of the components. But ultimately, what we're looking at is, again, what set us up for success for the pandemic was, is how much fresh air were we bringing into our buildings? We had commissioning agents involved in the designs of our buildings. We set really high goals. So when we went into that, plus we had did a pre-bond assessment, we were doing post-bond assessments to see how we were doing. We were way in front of the pandemic. We didn't even know it. But same way with roof systems, is we're not going to go out, if we say we're replacing a roof, we're assessing the roofs that need to be replaced. So we might have 100,000 square foot of roof. One might have been replaced 10 years ago, doesn't need to be replaced now. One might have been replaced 30 years ago, that does need to be addressed now. So we don't go through here and say, we're going to replace roof sections A, B, and C, but we are replacing the sections that need to be replaced.
So we will leave it up to the genius of Randy to explain that in two paragraphs or less.
I'll make it happen.
Right, Randy? Another thing that I think will come up is, safety is kind of a value-related word, and so we use the word safety, but I don't think it's safety the way our public's going to think about it. So what can we say about safety improvements that we may or may not get in this, and how safe our buildings are? Because I think we addressed a lot of that before, but I think we need to be upfront about talking about safety for our schools and facilities.
Yeah. I want to take a step back and look back to what we accomplished in 2014, because we really led the way with the work we did then. So when we think about secure vestibules, right, all of our schools now have secure vestibules. When you look around the state, there's still a lot of schools trying to find out how to fund, to put those in. When we think about compartmentalizing our buildings, we were able to do that in the 2014 bond. We put video surveillance around the perimeters of all of our schools. Our high schools now have interior cameras. We have intrusion detection through our buildings. And the reason I bring this up is because we really led the way, and we are in a great position right now, from a physical standpoint. So now it's really about maintaining those systems that we put in. So this bond does include some door hardware, some stuff that needs to be replaced, some of those more expensive items that require to be maintained. That is in this. It's not specifically spelled out from a physical safety standpoint, but be assured that we were able to accomplish a lot in 2014, really led the way, and right now, it's really maintaining those systems that we have. You know, when we think about intercom systems, extremely important in the middle of an event. So you'll see a lot of that falls into here, is maintaining our intercom systems or updating our intercom systems, et cetera. Those are those life safety systems. And then I go back, I think about fire alarm systems, they pertain to life safety, fire suppression systems, et cetera. Those are all included. Those systems are included in this package.
So to the man behind the curtain, Randy, I'm assuming that we'll have talking points around this, assuming we decide to go forward.
No, absolutely. I'll speak on behalf of Randy. Yes, no, we will have all of those talking points. We'll be very clear, very honest, very transparent. I think that Rob's done an excellent job this evening outlining the very high level and getting into the weeds a little bit in regards to what's in this bond. I think that it's important for our community and our board to know that this isn't a wish list. This is a critical needs list. When you don't fill critical needs, things happen that you don't want to happen, right? I mean, these are showstopper events. A boiler goes out, the intercom doesn't work. It puts kids at risk, it puts learning at risk, in addition to the work that we need to do with CTE, which is going to transform the opportunities and experiences for our kids, in addition to the idea of not addressing overcrowding when you have a chance to address it. The last thing you want to do is wait for something to get overcrowded and then come up with a solution. And I'm not sure if this district has ever faced those types of circumstances. I've been in places where you're talking double sessions, portable city, right? These are very undesirable things that we want in our schools and will definitely impact learning. And so when we think about the overcrowding, the critical needs, and the incredible work that we're going to be doing around Grad Plus and the supports that these facilities will really provide for us, I feel very comfortable and confident we'll have all the talking points, and we will be available to come talk to the community, to come talk to cities, chambers of commerce, whoever would like to ask us questions. We want our voters informed so they can make choices as voters and know and understand what is in this and what isn't in this.
So, fingers crossed it passes. How long until there would be an actual building in Erie? And how long until NuVista? Because it's a couple of years out, so that's why this is urgent as well. So can you just talk about the timing?
Putting me on the spot. I will have dates for you at the August 9 meeting. You know, right now, Erie, we're looking kind of in that three-to-four-year timeframe upon approval. NuVista, much quicker. Really, what I'd hate to overcommit to the NuVista community, because right now, we're still dealing with lead time issues, supplier issues, et cetera. So we need to get a general contractor on board, understand what the schedules are looking like before we go out and start committing the dates. So we can give some tentative dates, but you know, Erie, we're, again, three to four years out, tail end, but NuVista, we will be moving quickly. If you've driven by NuVista, it needed to be replaced a long time ago, and we realize that. So that will definitely be a priority coming out of the ground.
And I think our community understands we can't say it'll be done September 1 of 2024, but I just am trying to get a sense of the timing, because I think it adds to the crucial piece of this, is once it's passed, assuming it's passed, there's a long process before we actually see the results of it. And then just a couple more quick questions on CTE. You talked about the design team, but you didn't talk about how we would have community members as part of that. It was principals, parents, teachers. But the CTE process is a little different than designing a math curriculum or an English curriculum, because your end user is going to be your community in the business environment. Not that those others aren't, but in a different pathway. So can you just talk a little bit about the process? It's not like, none of this is a wish list. The principal doesn't get to say, oh, when I was in high school, I wished I'd had this. It's a much more robust process for figuring out which building is going to have, and then, I don't know, will it be brought to us? Or what's the approval process going to look like for that? And I'm just curious. I don't know if we have it figured out, but I think the community needs to know that this is a really robust CTE process, and not just giving a principal a couple million dollars and hoping that it gets well spent.
I'll share a couple of thoughts, and Rob, if you want to add on. As we think about CTE programming, right, we want to make sure that our CTE programs that we place in our schools end up in industry certifications that kids can use, right? And I think so to your point, it's not, you know, cooking up some program that doesn't have an industry certification, that doesn't have a pathway that's recognized by the state. And so there's a limit to the number of pathways that we have, right? Now, Richard asked a question. I think others are going to want to know, you know, what pathway is right for us. And I think with the design advisory team approach, including folks within the school community, is going to really give each individual school opportunity to really dial in. But when we think about the CTE programs that we're going to invest in as a district, we're already working with our business partners. We're already working with our business community. We already know the workforce needs here in Boulder County, right? And so think about this in two layers, right? Identifying the programs that we know that we have a need for as we meet our obligation to prepare the workforce, right? And we meet our obligation in those high-wage, high-needs jobs. And then as we get the design advisory team, the way I would anticipate that this would go, is that then they would know and understand the big picture, and they wouldn't start from scratch, saying, oh, I like this, I like that. It would be, this is the environment. How do we see the programming at this school, the strength of this school, the strength of this individual community? How do we see the programs that make a right fit here, right? And there will have to be some oversight, because as we think, we don't want to be duplicating programs. We want to make sure that we provide great opportunities, both at Boulder Tech and within our local schools. Some programs might make more sense to have centralized because of the expense of the program, right? And the needs of the equipment. You know, the equipment, if you're going to have industry certified, industry-standard labs, the level of equipment, the prices can rise really high. It wouldn't make fiscal sense to be duplicating those things. So I think there will be coordination, there will be local involvement, but again, you know, the big things that will guide us are, what are the opportunities that are going to put our kids in the best position once they leave Boulder Valley Schools? And then how do we engage our community through design advisory team, you know, type of a structure, maybe not the exact same structure, but that type of structure, to know and understand what programs fit in what community?
And for a later date, Rob, as I'm listening, I'm thinking, so let's say Boulder High wants to offer some really cool cybersecurity, but Monarch can't. So I'm wondering if there's going to be an ability for students to take classes that are CTE classes that may not be at their home high school? I know we haven't thought, I haven't thought about that, but as I'm listening, we may not duplicate in every high school those programs, and so I know transportation, I know all the things that are... And so I know transportation, I know all the things that are involved in that, but it's pretty exciting to think about how that might even expand the opportunities, so.
When we do this right, and we will do this right, kids will be able to take advantage of any and all opportunities that we have, to be able to study what they need to study to prepare them for work, prepare them for college, prepare themselves for career.
So any other questions for the board? Kitty?
Yeah, Rob, I just wanted to ask you, do you have any insights on supply chain issues? Because I know we're still having huge problems.
You know, that, right now in the market, they are still having problems. I mean, they're having problems with roofing materials, I mean, stuff as little as playground materials, et cetera. But again, trying to think ahead to what November will bring and the time after November, you know, other, other schools, districts not constructing because of, you know, they're wrapping up their bond programs, et cetera, will only help us, right? So we think through all of that. We're competing for the same supplies, we're competing for the same subcontractors, et cetera. So lesser school projects actually benefits, benefits us in many ways.
So you don't have any inside knowledge?
Well, I do, but my inside knowledge is really based on the day and for about the next six months. So we're trying to think until, you know, 2023. Even if the, the bond is approved in November, we've got to get architects on board, we've got to design these projects, et cetera. So a lot of times on a new school, we'll spend 12 to 18 months designing. So now, we're trying to think out to, you know, if, on a school, we might be 14 months out before we're even starting to procure some of those long lead items. But materials that are kind of low hanging, for example, synthetic turf, that's something that we can do right away, right? We'll jump right on that. Addressing accessibility issues on our playgrounds, that's something that we can come out of the gate and do immediately. So there's some of that stuff that I know the supplies are available, but something like a rooftop unit, roof materials, right now, those are in high demand, right? We're right in the middle of the summer, so people are struggling getting some of those materials. What that will look like in the summer of '23? I don't have a crystal ball, but I think we'll be ahead of the game like we have in the past.
Thanks.
Yes.
What is inflation for construction running right now? It's way higher than just the average consumer inflation. Isn't it somewhere between 15 and 30% right now?
You know, right now, I'm seeing 1% a month. That is not what we've carried in here. Again, the hope is, is that that will start dropping. Right now, about a half a percent a month for the first year, so 6%, and then 3% every year thereafter. So I'm carrying about 15% inflation. That's what makes up the $44 million when you look at the critical needs list.
Anybody else? Any last questions? So can you walk us through the timing between now and next week, and kind of what we expect? And then maybe next week, can we get a timeline of August 9 through election of kind of what, what the expectations are of the board and the district? And I think it'd be really helpful for us to know, because it's going to go fast, and there's going to be a lot of work.
Yep. So really, from a district point of view, we will finalize this document, address your comments. It will come to the board for action on August 9. On August 9, you will also approve the resolution that puts the ballot question on the November ballot. So those two documents will be coming to you as an action item next Tuesday. And then we start planning for the November 8 election. So we step back, we provide the facts, we'll continue to present at city council meetings, chamber meetings, et cetera. We will provide the facts of what's included in this critical needs list. The district will do no campaigning on behalf of this. So we'll just continue to present the information as it's presented tonight.
So board members, if you could look at this packet and get to Rob by the end of business Thursday, any changes you want to make to it so that they have time to incorporate it and get it in the board packet, that would be really helpful. And then I have a request through you to our attorney, which is, I think it would be really helpful if we could get some guidance on where the lines are, what board members can do, what staff can do, just a primer on that, so that we are all on the same page for that. Because as you said, Rob, the district, as I understand it, and Kathleen can throw something at me, can do factual information, but you can't go out and campaign for this. So at least not on, not on time when you're on the school district budget and school district hours. So I just think it'd be really helpful to get a primer on that as we start to launch so that we're all on the same page, and we are all operating under the same kind of guidelines. So any, those are my to-dos for, for all of us. So it's been a lot of work. It's been a heavy lift, I know, for, for you and your staff. And thanks to Susan for helping with getting all of this together. It's been really helpful to have someone who's been so laser focused on bond issues and helping us frame it. So I really want to just say thanks to, to you guys for working so hard over the summer. And we'll do, we'll find out where this lands next Tuesday.
And I do want to express a special thanks to Susan Cousins, our project managers, and Molly McLaughlin, all of our maintenance staff, because a lot, like I said, a lot of hours have went into this, combing through facility assessments, making sure the information is accurate before it ever got into this report. So a special thanks to everybody involved.
All right. I think that's it for the agenda for tonight, so we'll see everybody. So Rob, how, if there are changes to this document, do you want them to come straight to Rob through you? Would you, just straight to Rob? Okay. So if there's changes, just send them straight to Rob Price, hopefully by the end of Thursday, so there's time to figure out how to incorporate the changes. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
All right. I think we stand adjourned.